Okay, let's go ahead and get started. We can get started and as people come in, we can have them come in. If everyone would please, we welcome you to this meeting. It is Monday, March 23rd at 10:00 a.m. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. We are going to be having David Brock Smith join us as well. We have Jeremy here from Emergency Services. Just so everyone knows, we are trying to maintain the six-foot rule. I know we talked about the Blue Room, but with the amount of people that we were gonna have, we probably could've made it work, but we thought it would be just as easy to make it work up here. And we can also livestream to the public this way so that the public can see what's going on. The reason we need to get done first is the amendment. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Mr. Chair, I understood that our Wednesday meeting has been canceled.
Just the workshop.
Just the workshop.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we will still have the regular meeting, yes. Alright, so, motion, Commissioner Boyce?
Do you want a quick line of duty desk report? We could put it off till...
We could do that on Wednesday, I think.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's good.
So, I have any, no amendments, so I have an emotion?
My move that we approved an agenda as written.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
I kinda like to give a little roll call of who's here. We did ask, I sent an emailing out last night, and I'm sure I missed some people, but I see some people here that weren't emailed, so I'm glad to see that. We have Ms. Ward here, Council Huddle. Josh from Parks, Mr. Christensen from Rhodes, our Sheriff, Sheriff Ward and his captain are here. We have Ms. Howard from Brookings. We have our press here. We have Mr. Dumire, as I've already mentioned, in the hallway. I don't know who else we have in the hallway. David Brock Smith will be here shortly. So, we're gonna kinda take this meeting as it happens. But it is a very important meeting. It's an important time for our county. And we are today going to discuss the response to the COVID-19 pandemic that we are currently facing in the county. I know there's been a lot said on the social media and in the papers about what Curry County is doing to protect its citizens. And there are also some issues that we are facing that I'm sure the other members of this board, as well as myself, have been in constant contact with Representative David Brock Smith, as well as Salem and a couple of people in Washington on the happenings for this county. So, with that being said, I think I'd probably like to start out with a sheriff. If you could, Sheriff, give a brief report of what we spoke of over the weekend, what's happening, and what your hope is for what we're doing here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheriff Ward, Curry County Sheriff's Office. You know, I did have a conversation with Commissioner Pash and also Commissioner Boyce yesterday. Also with State Representative David Brock Smith. There were some concerns regarding people coming into our area that possibly escaping from their own areas just to be able to come to our location and hang out, do whatever. Apparently, there were some social media posts where this was happening. All the stuff on the stores had been, you know, cleared out. And they're basically accusing other people from other areas coming in and taking up our space and taking up our foods, bringing in the coronavirus. I don't know what the facts are behind that. I do know that I went down yesterday to Harbor and looked at several RV parks. The one that had photos taken of it was definitely not full. It was probably less than three-quarters full of people. I talked to the managers there, who, the port manager who run that, and they said that there were four people who had, four campers who had registered but left that day. They were, they'd registered several months ago for the spring break. And that's what I've been finding, that most of the people that are coming through the parks have been pre-registered for quite a while. I made a recommendation to the owners of the park and the managers of the parks that I went and had a conversation with. That was my recommendations, suggestions, that they cancel all reservations at that point that it weren't there and let the people go that were in there for a day or two and don't fill the position, or those spaces until further notified or probably into May. I didn't have any blowback by those people, the managers and the owners. They said that they would continue to do that and not take any further reservations. I do know that one RV park had like 25 people supposed to be coming in to reserve the spot for an elderly group from the valley, the Oregon Valley, or Medford area. That registered a year ago, isn't when they left, so they were going to call them and tell them not to come. As far as that, that's what I suggested. I told them not to kick anybody out, let them leave as they can. And that's basically my report.
Thank you, sir. If I could, while I have, on the conversation of parks, can I have Josh come up? And if you would give us kind of a report on where the parks are with, you know, how full they are, basically, those kinda things.
Curry County Parks, Josh Hopkins. So, last week, once the state park announced that they'd stopped taking reservations, April 1st, I think it was Thursday, I went ahead and blocked off our online reservation system so that no reservations could come in. Operate as first come, first served, up until we see what happens so that we're not having to refund a ton of different reservations. So, we already did that. With that, this weekend, we had what was reported to be about 20 campers total up at Boy's Cove. It's a 47-unit site, so maybe half-full. With those campers, the majority of them had made their reservations prior to anything like this. I think four of them had came in that night, that Friday night type of a thing. Most of the ones that came in, came in over from the valley. They're our typical campers we see come over here all the time type of a thing. They were just trying to get out of the valley for the day. As it stands, you know, we have four campers onsite, one of which is leaving on the 24th, the other one's leaving on the 25th, and the last one's leaving on the 31st, and then there's one person leaving today. We didn't end up with this large influx. Boy's Cove itself is geographically isolated, right on the coast out there. It's not the same as like the ports down in Harbor and everything like that. We did get some concerns from our local neighbors, saying that they were concerned that the campground was still open because they have homes and everything around there. Granted, the nearest house to any of our campsites is 50 to 100 feet away. So, as far as social distancing or any spacing goes, that's not necessarily as big of a concern as they should be worried about. Our campsites themselves are built to state code. Code allows for the campsites to have a minimum of 10 feet of space in between each other. They're all 35-foot-long campsite pads. So, even when the campground does have people in it, it's not like people are right next to each other. The biggest issue would be like the shared bathroom facilities, and that's what it is for everybody, but we keep those clean. So, you know, with that, we can close them down, we can keep them going. But as it stands, our system isn't really set up to do refunds. So, much process goes into doing a refund on the governmental side of things. So, for our campers that are currently there, like the guy that's leaving on the 31st, or the guy leaving on the 24th or the 25th, it'd be best just to let them stay. Unfortunately, with all of these campground closures, my concern is that it's going to create even a larger health and human safety issue, especially on the public health side of things. There are thousands of RV campers that are full-time campers that travel throughout the state of Oregon, just thousands of them. Normally, they're in state parks and they go from state park to state park to state park, and they just do it in a circle. State parks are closed. County parks are looking like they're going that way to be closed. KOAs, everyone else is looking to be closed. These campers are gonna end up at places like Buy Mart, whose store policy allows them to stay overnight in their parking lots. They're gonna end up on our roadways. They're gonna end up in our day-use areas where there's no gate for us to close the day-use area. So, instead of being able to say, "Yeah, come to Boy's Cove if you want," so that, you know, we have a spot for them to be able to shelter in place, they're just gonna be shotgunned across our communities, traveling back and forth.
Alright.
So, that's basically where we're at.
Thank you. Mr. Dumire, do you have, commi, uh...
I forgot to add one thing. I'm not worried about the state parks or the parks set inside the city limits. The only ones that I'm worried about are the ones that are in the county, that we have any type of control over. After talking to Commissioner Boyce yesterday, he mentioned that there's a possibility that the Agnes RV Park is full. I'm gonna go up there today and have a little chat with him as well, after we get a direction of how you guys wanna handle the county parks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Dumire, did you have some comments you wanted to make?
Good morning. For the record, Jeremy Dumire, Emergency Manager. I've had a chance to look over this resolution, and given what I have witnessed in my travel, I did go to Roseburg this week to get my kids. I passed lines of vehicles plated from other areas, particularly the state of Washington. So, I thought it would be prudent to give some stats in this hearing. Currently, there are 36,255 positive cases of coronavirus in the United States. State of Washington and State of California are in the top three, with the state of Washington having 1,996 positive confirmed cases and 92 fatalities. State of California has 1,816 positive confirmed cases with 35 fatalities. By comparison, currently, the state of Oregon, we have 161 positive confirmed cases and five fatalities. So, there is a concern, especially amongst the public and some of the leadership, that Oregon looks safe, and particularly when you look at the coastline and the rural areas east of the Cascades, that those seem to be the safest places to be, which is gonna put a taxation on our resources.
While on the subject, Curry County itself, stats.
Curry County itself, I would pass that off to Sheree Ward.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ward? Sorry, you were giving out the statistics. I thought you'd give out the current as well.
Good morning. Sheree Ward, Public Health Administrator. Current in Curry County. We actually have zero positive cases in Curry County, zero deaths in Curry County, and 12 tests that have come back that have been negative. There is still testing currently going on, and we have rapid testing over at Curry General Hospital, so...
We do have the rapid testing now?
We do.
Good. Commissioner Gold?
Do you know how many test kits are available here?
Not off the top of my head, I do not.
Okay.
I saw a new rapid test thing off the record, off the subject, kind of, in Korea last night. It's two telephone booths that have basically been put together. A doctor goes in with these big rubber gloves that go through the thing, and they do a swab, they put in a bag, and it's a vacuum door that slams it back through the other side. And they have, in seven minutes, they have the result.
I'd like to say I saw that, but I actually went passed out on the couch if I hadn't recommended sleep.
Hang on one.
Commissioner Boyce?
So, Friday, I think, was 11 on the negative post, so we're only up one over the weekend, it sounds like. Is that...
So far, yes, correct.
I think that's a good sign, even though it is one. Thank you.
Ms. Howard, would you like to give us any information on Brookings, or you just wanna sit and relax and observe for now? Okay. So, we have David Brock Smith here, and I'd like to invite Representative Smith in to kinda give us a panoramic view of the situation in the state of Oregon and your thoughts on what you're asking us to look into with you. And I appreciate all your hard work with us here and the resolution that you worked on so hard to get to us.
Well, I appreciate that, Chair Pash and Commissioners. It's good to see you all and thank you for all the hard work that you're doing for our residents. I know many of them are very scared at this time, and for good reason. I mean, we have an unprecedented event with the COVID-19 or coronavirus pandemic here across the world and the nation. And as Emergency Manager Dunmire pointed out, we look like a safe haven. And what that is doing is taxing our resources here on the coast and providing for additional concern of our residents as they are trying to maintain the governor's executive orders of social distancing and staying home unless they need to come out. And so, I appreciate all of you coming out. I appreciate you practicing the six-foot social distancing rule at this time and staying healthy, because we need to be there for our residents. It seems like we're working more now as legislators than if we were in the Capitol. As you know, in the absence of a legislative session, and legislators working in Salem in the Capitol, the governor has unilateral authority to move forward on executive orders and puts, to put things in place for the public. We are expecting to go back in for a special session either later this week or early next week. There's been a task force created by the governor for response, to offer recommendations, and the Senate President and the Speaker created the Coronavirus Response Committee, which has been meeting, and they're meeting right now, actually, at the Capitol, to come forward with recommendations at this time. Those recommendations are going to include a number of things, but more importantly, to probably allocate $200 million or more to the Legislative Emergency Board so that they can deal with response as it happens, or excuse me, as needed, without the legislative approval for those budgetary items. That committee is made up of cross-section of senators, and it's a joint committee, senators and House members, both on both sides of the aisle. As we, many of you probably saw the governor's press conference on Friday. The governor is under a tremendous amount of pressure to close, do a stay-home order such as California and Washington at this time. But what she has done in her current orders is basically the same thing. I want to stress that. She has given a number of orders that, and she's calling it "stay home, stay healthy", rather than "shelter in place," which is not the proper term for this type of issue. She is moving forward with other executive orders today, and I can list those a little later for you. As, after the Friday press conference and the weekend was coming upon us, especially in the North Coast, there was a tremendous amount of recreation and tourism visitors to those beaches. That prompted cities and other counties to move forward with various directions of their own. And it, I'm, as Chair of the Oregon Legislative Coastal Caucus, we've been talking regularly. And in doing so, I made a suggestion to the Coastal Caucus that they accepted yesterday on our conference call prior to the Coastal Governor's Call, that one of the best ways to move forward to limit the symptoms, if you will, of visitors coming and overwhelming our facilities, overwhelming our grocery stores, overwhelming our parks, overwhelming our beaches, that don't allow residents to do social distancing, would be to look at temporary closing of transient lodging facilities. And I know that this is a huge economic impact already to our communities. But these are the small steps that we can take to not only protect our citizens, but also give the governor the support that she needs to not do a statewide "shelter in place, stay at home, stay healthy" order, which would have far more reaching economic impacts to this state and our business community in the future. And be, many of us think, including the governor, because we've had this conversation, that it would be very difficult for an economic recovery of Oregon after that, in every reach, in all reaches of our state. And so, the Coastal Caucus, on the, as the Chair, I recommended that we, for, that we close transient lodging facilities for a minimum of folks that do not want to purchase or stay more than 28 days so that we can stay under the 30-day rent control rule, if you will. That provides folks, if you stay longer than 30 days, then you're a full-time, you know, renter at that point, which causes other issues down the line. And I was glad to see that Clatsop County and Essence took those recommendations and applied them. Tillamook County went a little farther in closing recreational fishing opportunities using public boat launches, which I think is a little extreme because once again, that is a symptom of folks coming over and having a place to stay. So, you have before you the resolution that, and thank you Commissioners and Chair Pash for allowing me. I used to draft these when I was a Commissioner and help out, and so I just pulled up an old template and busted it out. But really, the governor heard our message from the Coastal Caucus, and I'm hopeful that she will be including that in a future executive order, if just for the coast. And if, and every, and that's why it's a resolution asking her to do so. I will tell everyone that, again, it's because of the, there's a lot of angst in the business community. And I just received the update on the way down, so forgive me as I search, as I look work here in my email. But the businesses that will be included in the next executive order, the order is going to include the following provisions. All non-essential social and recreational gatherings of individuals are prohibited immediately, regardless of size. If a distance of at least six feet between individuals cannot be maintained, gatherings of members of the same residential household are permitted. It closes the, and prohibits shopping at specific categories of retail businesses for which close, close personal contact is difficult to avoid, such as arcades, barber shops, hair salons, gyms, fitness studios, skating rinks, theaters, and yoga studios. It requires businesses not closed by the order to implement social distancing policies in order to remain open and requires workplaces to implement teleworking and work-at-home options when possible. It directs Oregonians to stay home whenever possible while permitting activities outside the home when social distancing is maintained. It closes playgrounds, sports courts, and skate parks, among other types of outdoor recreation facilities. Those that remain open are required to strictly adhere to the social distancing guidelines. It outlines new guidelines for childcare facilities, setting limits and rules on the amount of children allowed in care and outlining that childcare groups may not change participants. Failure to comply with the order will be considered an immediate danger to the public health and subject to a Class C misdemeanor. The businesses include, list includes shopping, outdoor and indoor malls and retail complexes, although individual types of businesses not subject to the measure may stay open. Fitness, gyms, sports, and fitness centers, health clubs, and exercise studios. Grooming, barber shops, beauty and nail salons, and other medical wellness spas. Finally, entertainment, theaters, amusement parks, arcades, bowling alleys, and pool halls. I don't know, we don't know when the governor is going to come out with her press conference to outline this to the public. Again, these are the measures being taken to further the social distancing requirements rather than going to a full statewide "stay home" mandate, which again, would close even more businesses and further damage the economy. I know this is a very difficult time to all those residents out there. I appreciate all of your work and all of our city managers and city councilors and all the work as we move through this. I do not wanna lose one person to this disease in Curry County or my jurisdiction, and I don't think anyone of us want to either. We all are very cognizant of the economic impacts that we are applying to our state and to our regions and to our communities and to those citizens. And we will do, and we continue to do, anything and everything that we can do to make sure that we can alleviate that stress and that economic burden. I'm in constant contact with our federal delegation as well on what they're doing on the federal side. I've offered suggestions to them in mortgage and business loan relief that can be federally backed. Insurance can be federally backed for business insurance so that we can then allow the loss from the COVID-19 virus, excuse me, coronavirus and COVID-19 to be claimed as an insurance loss, such as it would if it was a fire and loss. As well as suspending some rules with regards to the USDA inspection program so that we can locally source our meat products. And lastly, suspending the regulations around our fishers being able to sell product directly from their boat. There's extremely, because of the closures of all the conventions and all of the, you know, buffets and restaurants, no one is buying seafood. And so, by eliminating the regulations for our fishers to be able to sell directly from their boat, we keep them employed. We have fresh local product for our citizens that they don't have to go to the grocery store for, which limits their exposure there, and we're helping our economies and getting a market for those folks as well. That's what I have at this moment. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deep breath, you know, just for a minute. Wonderful report, terrific job on the governor's phone conference yesterday. You're the only one that got to speak twice, and I was pretty proud, very proud. Representing Curry County, representing your district, representing Southern Oregon and the Oregon Legislative Coastal Caucus. I think you mentioned yesterday, and it's a good reminder, we still have no cases in the Oregon coast. And you also referenced Clatsop County and Tillamook County. I've been on the phone with them. And, you know, not having a death yet on the Oregon coast, they're pretty fierce to try and understandably to protect that stat. And I think that, notwithstanding the amount of work you put into this resolution, I think this will certainly help to accommodate that. There are 20 paragraphs here, and the way, the way you've listed the sequence and dates of the governor's orders, executive orders, is, you know, to see, like, three of them on the 17th. It's, you referenced yesterday on the phone with how close this is affecting us between Washington and California and the pressure on her, I think is quite noteworthy. So, I think this is probably a step in what might be inevitable on the "stay at home" or "shelter in place." I hope not. So, certainly, I'm anxious to support this and wanna just say thanks for the great work. I wanna read just her last paragraph here. Curry County supports our, or the last paragraph, second to last, I'm sorry, of this resolution that you put together, Representative Brock Smith. It's only three lines. Curry County supports our business community and encourages tourism, but not at this time as it causes violations of Governor Brown's executive orders and the protocols from the Oregon Health Authority in addition to adding stress on resources for residents due to the closure of sit-down dining, a... the closure of sit-down dining establishments. It's only three lines, but boy, it says it all. So thank you again. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. And, you know, these measures and all that the governor is taking, we all can watch what's happening and what unfolded in Italy. As you, as you know, the governor's created an executive order for an emergency declaration for the state of Oregon was only 15 days ago. And, and a lot has changed since then. But the spread has been curved, and it needs to continue to be curved. All modeling that I have access to shows that D-Day, if you will, is around April 7th, where the peak of that curve, if nothing is in place, will overwhelm our healthcare facilities around this state. And so, I'm hopeful that with the, again, the support of the Coastal Caucus on these recommendations, with the support of Curry, this has been sent to Coos County for them to modify, it's been sent to the cities for them to look at and possibly modify for themselves, and it will be sent all the way up the coast, that we can all work together. The problem with Tillamook, you know, again, our commissioners are elected to represent the citizens and residents within their jurisdiction. And so, the problem with Tillamook and Clatzen going alone with what they've done, it's like a balloon. As you put pressure in the middle, it bulges out both ends. And so, unless we take steps to ensure that we have, that we follow similar protocols, you will see more of an influx of residents here, because they can't go there. So, thank you.
And that's why, when so many bills that you write get put through, because you have the closure on the end that you just gave us, so. Commissioner Gold?
One of the problems we have here in Curry County is the lack of beds here in Curry County. If something were to happen, we have no ICU. Would the state be willing to help out with possibly setting up other areas? I know there's some buildings that are vacant down in Harbor that could possibly, we could possibly set up beds there if necessary. Is the state going to be willing to help fund this situation if it comes to that?
Well, so my quick answer is yes.
Okay.
But I know, and Jeremy might be better to answer this, but my quick answer is, we do only have 16 beds in Curry County. And, well, 20 if you count the ER beds down in South County. If we get to a point where we start to see the spread overwhelm our services, I believe that there is the ability to do a stand-up mobile hospital, and they have the resources to do that if they need to. It won't be something probably like they've done in Salem, where they've already put one up in place, but they can expand the area where we could have a mobile hospital in a very short time to, to take care of those health needs for those residents.
And what I'd like to say, a good example of that might be the Rush Center down in Brookings, because they have a lot of those medical facilities already, the basics are already set up in that facility and different parts of it. So that might be something that we look at. Did you have a comment on that, Mr. Dumire?
Nothing to add. Representative Brock Smith is correct, there are possibilities available, of course. For instance, the state of New York has done exactly what the representative has referenced. So if it comes to that, we'll make the request and move forward.
Thank you. Also, I just see some people in the hallway. I see Ms. Fritz and Ms. Eldaga. If you guys want to have a seat in the chairs, we've got the speakers on, and then I'm going to ask all of you to come in and make comments if you don't mind. I just want to make sure we're keeping our proper distances from everyone. So, Commissioner Gold, you had another question?
I just have one, one more comment. I've been looking at, I guess I'm an old math person, and the exponential growth curve is very, very scary. Just, just saying.
You're exactly right, and your math skills are spot-on, Commissioner.
I will say this, though, I applaud, I look at the numbers of different nations. Our death rate is, I mean, other than, I think it is, Germany is extremely low, but our death rate percent, on a percentage-wise, is much lower than a lot of the countries in the world, so.
Well, it is, and President Trump has done a fantastic job in moving things forward and trying to get the resources through the regulations that he has with the CDC and the, I just lost the...
Or World Health?
Well, no, the FDA and so forth with getting resources. A lot of our, one of the problems that we have is a lot of the ingredients that go into our drugs and so forth, we get, and we get a lot of these things from China. They were shut down to deal with their own issue, and there was issues with regards to spread, right? So, it is, you know, I try to keep apolitical these days when it comes to this stuff, but the results show that we are doing a very good job nationally and with the state to make sure that we reduce the spread and therefore the curve nationally. There is, you know, of course, concern, we still are not out of the woods yet, we have weeks to go before, before that curve is even supposed to be realized, but it looks like if we continue these measures, that we can limit the risk and of course, stop the spread.
Commissioner Gold?
Just one short comment. This really should not be a political issue where people are in fighting back and forth. We need to be in this all together as a team, not fighting with each other.
Agreed.
So Council Huddle, if you would please, I'd just like to ask, you know, you've looked at this resolution, I just want to make sure that you are comfortable with the wording of the resolution, if the commissioner should decide to enact this resolution. The language is clear. I did notice one thing in there, and I'll give any of the other commissioners a chance to comment on it as well, but, and I don't have it in front of me, I have it, I left it on my desk and I highlighted it, but I think we should have an end date on the time that this ends, the 28 days. And I see at the bottom of it, Representative Smith did put an end date of what the governor says, but I think if we're going to label the top of it as Curry County, it should, we should have an end date on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, in the actual resolution, it says until May 1st, 2020, if that's the governor's date you're talking about. I was looking at our calendar, May 1st is a Friday, certainly the Board of Commissioners can meet on any day that we decide, but it may make sense for us to have May 1st or some other date. I believe our own personal, our own individual emergency declaration was until June sometime. That might make sense to make it correspond with that. This is, again, a request to the governor for her to make something statewide, so there is a little bit of a back and forth between whether it's ours or whether it's hers. Our request would be for her to set up a different end date than Mr. Chair. So, it's the will of the board there. I think Representative Smith is probably more tied into, you know, the pulse of Salem, that he would know what the appropriate end date to urge the governor to impose. So if, if May 1st is what Representative Smith has put on here based on his insight, I'm okay with that.
And we can always change it, correct?
Can. And again, it is a request by this resolution, just to make clear, we are not ordering a shutdown, we're requesting the governor to take a regional or statewide action. We are, we are not doing what Clatzen and the other counties have done, because as Representative Smith said, it will just push, you know, people somewhere else. So, unless there's any questions, that's all I really had.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff, if we could have you come back up for just a moment, please? I'm just, you're, you're the head of enforcement of protecting the citizens in this county, and I just want to, after you've heard everything this morning, I want to see if there's, you know, ask you if you see anything additional that you think could be added to or taken away from?
Well, I was just out there talking to Dave Brock Smith about the wording in here that wasn't quite clear to me, that, you know, once we tell the residents or the managers of the parks and things like that, to cancel all reservations that aren't, people that aren't there at this point, what about the people that are there? He says it doesn't affect those people as long as, you know, they're going to leave, you know, after their stay anyway, but not to fulfill, not to refill those positions or the spaces. So, that was my concern, that we're not kicking people out. People need to be in those, that situation.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And I just want a little food for thought. I hear a lot about, you know, say, for instance, the deaths from coronavirus, but it doesn't really state, you know, I don't know if there's been any autopsies or whatever. Is it just because of the coronavirus? Is there underlying other medical reasons that they died from? Because it always says died from coronavirus. I don't know the facts behind that. So, and then, we don't hear anything about a cure, but I have done some research online and it led to certain websites that says, you know, they have tested some medication that will cure this in six days, and that's medications that's already in the pharmacies all throughout the state, you know. They talk about the Z-Packs, you know, that help. And another one that they use for malaria, that they've tested on certain people and have secured them within six days of the coronavirus itself. So, you don't hear about those, ask what I'm curious about, so.
Commissioner Boyce?
I think I could add a little something to that, and I believe fairly reliable, France has two pills that they give at the same time, and they're old, maybe that's the same story?
It is.
Yeah, and the one doctors on there, he was so unbelievably excited, and you mentioned six days, I think that is accurate, and I don't remember the name of the pills, but there's a mad scramble to try and remanufacture them immediately in this country, and so, and with a couple different manufacturers, so.
And they also said that...
That is good news, hopefully. It's certainly not bad.
Those medications are already in the pharmacies, you know, if it helps, or, you know, why not open it up to the doctors? You get a prescription from a doctor to get those things, if they're there, to help stop the spread.
Right.
You don't hear nothing about medications out there than that, so.
Commissioner Gold?
I just heard President Trump talking about that very issue today, and he is in favor of allowing that to happen.
Fast-tracking.
Fast-tracking. Representative Smith, you have some more?
Thank you.
Not looking at watches today, so.
Well, so I am leaving here and racing to Banden for an emergency city council meeting at the request of Mayor Shamahorn at noon today. So I was just making sure that we're not past 11:00.
Got you.
To the sheriff's point, and there is, and there is evidence in Oregon, but let me preface this with, this is not a cure. This is still under, of course, since this, since, you know, the coronavirus has been around for a long time. This is not, and coronavirus is not a new virus. Many people in the beginning looked at the back of their Lysol spray cans and saw coronavirus listed, and some conspiracy theories thought that, you know, this is, this is not new. This is, this is a coronavirus that causes COVID-19, which is a new strain of coronavirus. And so, it impacts the respiratory, the respiratory areas of individuals, as the sheriff pointed out. People with compromised immune systems, cardiovascular disease, already upper respiratory tract infections and so forth are, and the older populations that have these already, folks with diabetes are more compromised when it comes to the coronavirus, and then of course, what it does is COVID-19. The drug that you're speaking of is chloroquine, and there was, there's a veterans home in Lebanon that was impacted by coronavirus, and I believe, I'm trying to remember, eight patients contracted it. They were able to stop the spread to those eight patients, and they did, my understanding is, give them a sequence of chloroquine, a Z-Pak, and I encourage everyone to get your, to take your multivitamins and take your emergency or, you know, and boost your immune system through vitamin C, if you can, in general. We've discussed this at the, at the Joint Committee on Coronavirus Response, and had presentations on it, but again, it's not a cure. But what it does do, and what the chloroquine does do, is it seems that it relaxes your body's stress response to allow it to focus on fighting the virus, and less impact on your other organs in getting into a stress factor. Those, my understanding, again, those folks in the veterans home in Lebanon were all over 80, and, and they did not need the use of ventilators under this method. We did lose one yesterday, but he was 93 and had other underlying health conditions. And so, my prayers to his family and thank him for his service. So I hope I covered everything there. I would just suggest to Mr. Chair, for the public, so that they know what this is, that you might want to read this into the record, when you, when and if you decide to move it, so that they, they know everything about it.
Okay, I just had one more question. I just asked Council about the date, that May 1st date, you're comfortable with that date? Because we had originally made June 30th our date, but it seems that, you know, you're trying to give the governor direction as well, all of us in agreement as a caucus. So are you comfortable with the May 1st date?
I am. I put it, I put the May 1st date there, Mr. Chair, thank you, because, A, it's going to be up to the governor to decide when, when and if. B, we should be over the peak. So we started on March 8th, we should peak by April 7th. So I was shooting for May to, at that point, we can reassess, and I'm sure the governor will.
Well, hopefully, we'll have a decreasing exponential curve.
So, if you wouldn't mind, Commissioner Boyce, would you mind reading the resolution in the record, please?
Be glad to. One quick...
Brock Smith?
Representative? Yeah, I want you to spell that, by the way.
Chloroquine is C-H-L-O-R-O-Q-U-N.
I thought there was an I in that.
Q-U-I-N.
Excuse me, Q-U-I-N.
Okay, thank you.
Schoolteacher here.
Yeah, not me.
Best color in the world.
Not me. Representative Brock Smith, are you going to the Coos County Commissioners today? Is it?
Thank you. No, I'm not. I'm going to Banden. I did email this resolution as a template to the Coos County Commissioners. Well, actually, actually, it makes it, my chief of staff did, as I was driving down, and I did email it to Mayor Shamahorn of Banden and the city manager, as well as the city managers for our communities in Curry County.
Would you like, Mr. Chair, if the board agrees, I'd like to send that to the Coos County Commissioners, assuming we approve this today. And I know you're, they're going to want to be talking to you fairly soon. I also appreciate very much your reference to Clatzen and Tillamook Counties, the commissioners there, they're, especially Dave Yamamoto, I've been on the phone with him two or three times over the weekend, and he has the Washington license place coming over the border, and just like we have the California, but I think for some reason, and you've also mentioned this, that it's, he almost, and he's a very balanced human being, and he's just like a swarm. And so that's, I think, why they went beyond what the OLCC, Oregon Legislative Coastal Caucus, by the, you know, the same acronym, is Liquor Control Commission, anyway, that's why they went, the route they went, and of course, they're hoping, and Clatzen County as well. So yes, whenever you want me to read it.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Just, I've been in contact with all of my commissioners, and was on the phone with each one of the Coos County Commissioners yesterday separately, trying to adhere to, you know, open public meeting laws. We aren't debating, they're not speaking, and I'm not telling them...
Understand.
What each other said, but just to offer information and ask, answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Great work.
Sure.
Come on up.
Absolutely. I saw you go like this a while ago, I didn't know if that meant you didn't want to comment or what?
Yeah, no, I didn't want to come in the room.
You got to pull that one microphone down, just, the one microphone, there you go.
And I'm not gonna touch the podium.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted, I, I just wanted to thank you for having this meeting, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge, uh, Representative Smith, because, um, I, I contacted his Kim yesterday in somewhat of a panic because of what I'm calling the virus vacationers. Um, it's, it's deeply troubling to me that people are not taking this seriously. And us coastal communities, I feel, are at greater risk, A, because of our age, and B, because we don't have the healthcare resources that larger areas have. And I just, it, I can't believe that people are coming here and putting us at risk. So thank you, cause you reached out yesterday, but I wanted to acknowledge, um, Representative Smith, when he sent out his update email a couple of days ago and said that, you know, we're all in this together, whether you agree or disagree or like or dislike Governor Brown, we're all in this together. And so this is not the time to, you know, be dissing one another, and I appreciate very much that, that Representative Smith said that. And I, I feel the same way, we're all in this together, so, um, so thanks for reaching out, Court, appreciate it.
I've archived all your wonderful emails, by the way, they are, they're, they're awesome. So with that, uh, Mr. Chair-
Commissioner Boyce, for the record.
Yes.
One, one second, please.
Sure.
Ms. Hildago, I, uh, go ahead.
So, um, I did owe everything that Jody just said in terms of recognizing, um, the commissioners for leaning forward and Representative Smith for taking action and trying to bring us together. I did want to put a couple of things on your radar, and I appreciate the language that's in the resolution, um, but we are already receiving phone calls from school districts, um, the McKenney-Vento liaisons who are concerned about families and kiddos that are living in campgrounds and/or RV parks, um, that may be, if, if this isn't interpreted properly, may be dislodged, and so I'm just, I want to put that on your radar as far as can we do some crisis emergency risk communication with those campgrounds and RV park owners to make sure that they understand the language in the resolution so that there aren't people that are displaced in the process of our response. And the second thing I'd like to share is I participated on a Zoom meeting with Coos Health and Wellness, um, the Sheriff of Coos County, Roger Craddock, Florence, their Public Health Director, Waterfall Clinic, Nancy Devereaux Center, and Harmony Church and College Park Church on Friday. Um, Coos Health and Wellness is taking measures to place hand washing stations, stations in places where unhoused people gather. So at the Devereaux Center, Harmony and College Park Church, they're putting hand washing stations in, and they are also assembling hygiene kits that include digital thermometers so, and printed material and guidance on what people should do if they are feeling ill or having symptoms of COVID. And I would like to ask that our public health lean forward in that same way, and if there's anything I can do to help in, in that effort. Um, we have limited people in our resource center to one person at a time in our lobby. They must use hand sanitizer when they come in. We've suspended showers because I'm the only one over there and I can't properly disinfect the shower between clients. Um, we're only open ten to two, and we're, basically, we're giving out food and water at this time, blankets, other tangible items that people might need, but we're not doing any face-to-face intakes, we're not, I just don't have the capacity to ensure that we're not gonna be part of the problem. So, um, thank you again for leaning forward, I appreciate it, and please contact me if I can be of any help, and if we're gonna have any collaborative meetings, I'd really like to be involved in those meetings. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just for the record, we will, we will make, uh, you know, if anyone needs to clarify anything on this, it's, we don't have a problem with it. And I can imagine, we can also put it up on social media as well, um, exactly what we've done, so. Counsel?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I know we had Jody Fritz from City of Gold Beach, the city administrator, and I know we have Janelle Howard, the city administrator of Brookings in here. Um, sometimes on resolutions, uh, we would add a statement saying, and whereas on March, what is it, twenty-third, the Curry County Board of Commissioners held an emergency public meeting to discuss this resolution, attended by, you know, the City of Brookings, City of Gold Beach. That could be a possible addition, just again, to communicate to the governor that we have included and invited those other communities, if he want, we can easily put that in.
I think that would be a welcome addition, yes.
Is, is that, uh, and that's okay, I just got kind of the, the nod from Janelle Howard at Brookings as well, so.
Thank you, counsel. Josh?
And this is probably a clarification that counsel can address, but with this resolution, is this just us requesting the governor follow these things, or is this the actual order of the county saying?
It's us requesting the governor.
Okay, so as far as Ms. Hildago's concern about people getting displaced from their homes or anything like that, part of the communication needs to be that this is just our request for the governor to follow these guidelines, we're said to get over to them, it's not an order that people need to be knocked out of their places right today.
Right.
Counsel?
Thank you, and if I could, even, even if the governor does adopt these recommendations, it's phrased so that it's only the short-term, um, travelers, it's for the transient lodgers, not, from what I understand, uh, Ms. Barker-Dalgo's, uh, clients would be the folks who are long-term lodgers in these things, so.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that I understand that it does include Curry County parks in this resolution.
It would include any transient lodging.
Any transient lodging, yes.
I, I assumed, I just want to double check that, okay. Mr. Chair, thank you. With this, with this resolution, uh, with the, the number of people I've heard from within the county, um, I hope this is enough, but it may very well not be. People, and I think responsible, balanced-thinking folks are saying, you know, thank you, Governor, but visitors, go home, stay healthy, stop the spread, come back, we'll let you know when that time is. That's what they're telling me. This may cover that, um, I'm, I'm just gonna be watching really close, and I hope, I hope I don't have to come back to the board two or three days or even a week and say, this wasn't enough, we need more of a Tillamook County type of resolution. Uh, and I understand, as, as been discussed here today, why we did that. Quick paragraph here from, uh, Commissioner Tim Freeman-Roseberg, this is trying times for all of us as we navigate through the unprecedented safety measures and restrictions. But it is never more important, remember, to be kind to others, be kind to yourself, and be kind to those in our communities. Remember, we are all in this together. Um, he's just been a great source, uh, in Douglas County, thank you. I'm not gonna read all the numbers, okay? Is that okay? Whereas the Curry County Board of Commissioners declared that a local state of emergency exists for Curry County, resolution number R-2020-08. And whereas, on March eighth, twenty-twenty, Oregon Governor Kate Brown moved Executive Order twenty-dash-oh-three, Declaration of Emergency Due to the Coronavirus COVID-19 Outbreak in Oregon. And whereas on March twelfth, twenty-twenty, Oregon Governor Kate Brown moved Executive Order twenty-dash-oh-five prohibiting large gatherings due to same virus outbreak, that outbreak in Oregon. And whereas on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty, Oregon Governor Kate Brown moved Executive Order twenty-dash-oh-six, Declaration of Abnormal Disruption of the Market Due to Same. Whereas on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty, Oregon Governor Kate Brown moved Executive Order twenty-dash-oh-seven prohibiting on-premises consumption of food and drink and gatherings of more than twenty-five people. That's a tough one for our county, all, all the coast, the entire state. Whereas on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty, Oregon Governor Kate Brown moved Executive Order twenty-dash-oh-eight, school closures and the provision of school-based and childcare services in response to same. Whereas on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty, Oregon Governor Kate Brown moved Executive Order twenty-dash-oh-nine, suspension of in-person instructional activities at higher education institutions in response to same. Whereas on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty, Oregon Governor Kate Brown moved Executive Order twenty-dash-ten, preserving personal protective equipment and hospital beds, protecting healthcare workers, postponing non-urgent healthcare procedures, and restricting visitation in response to same. And then yesterday's five-twenty-three, state par, I'm, I'm just reading this, it doesn't need to be added into the regu, resolution, at least this time, state parks, um, full closures. Whereas, uh, the coronavirus has greater health impacts to older populations and those with existing health conditions. Great stats coming up here. Whereas according to the US Census, Curry County's resident population of fifty-plus years of age is fifty-five-point-seven percent with a median age of fifty-five-point-six years. Whereas according to the US Census, Curry County's resident population of sixty-plus years of age of full adults is, uh, fifty-four, fifty-seven-point-twenty-six, having homes with at least one person, sixty-plus years of age at fifty-five-point-four-five percent. And whereas, the two thousand eighteen Curry Health Risk Assessment, I'll say that again, the two thousand eighteen Curry Health Risk Assessment by Advantage Health Statistics show that chronic lower respiratory disease, C-L-R-D, is the third-leading cause of death in Curry County. And whereas, as of the date of this resolution, there have been no presumptive, uh, or positive cases of Coronavirus COVID-19 identified in Curry County. Whereas Curry County and our coastal communities have limited healthcare resources for in-hospital patient care to treat Coronavirus COVID-19 and positive cases. Whereas Curry County and our coastal communities have limited- Whereas Curry County and our coastal communities have limited supplies and resources for the needs of our existing residents. And whereas Governor Brown and the Oregon Health Authority have issued the executive orders listed above and in this document, protocols for state residents for social distancing and to stay home and stay healthy to reduce the spread and flatten the curve of the Coronavirus COVID-19 as to not overwhelm the state's limited healthcare resources. Should I try again? And whereas Curry County and our coastal communities are seeing an influx of visitors during this time from California, Washington, and other areas outside of our jurisdiction, that increases the risk of Coronavirus COVID-19 spreading Curry County and our coastal communities. And whereas, I've already read this paragraph, but it's, it's surely worth repeating, Curry County supports our business community and encourages tourism, but not at this time, as it causes violation of government, violations, excuse me, of Governor Brown's executive orders and the protocols from the Oregon Health Authority, in addition to adding stress on resources for residents due to the closure of sit-down dining establishments. And whereas to preserve the public health, life, and safety of the residents of Curry County and our coastal communities, it is the recommendation to Governor Brown by the Oregon Legislative Coastal Caucus that all transient lodging facilities be closed to stay and purchase to persons of less than twenty-eight days along the Oregon coast. Now therefore, the Board of Curry County Commissioners hereby resolves that public health, life, and safety emergency exists in Curry County due to individuals that are not following the protocols set forth in Governor Brown's executive orders and outlined by Oregon Health, the Oregon Health Authority, and continue to visit Curry County and coastal communities during this time of the Coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. And the Board of Curry County Commissioners hereby for the resolve to request with this resolution that Kate Brown, Governor of Oregon, include in her next executive order the recommendations of the Oregon Legis, Legislative Coastal Caucus to close all transient lodging facilities to stay and purchase to persons of less than twenty-eight days in Curry County, including our coastal counties and their communities until May first, twenty-twenty, with limited exceptions to individuals in the trucking industry, victims of domestic violence, healthcare workers, contract workers, and others that may be deemed as essential personnel services dated this twenty-third day of March.
So, we are going to make the amendment, am I correct, counsel huddle, that the cities were involved in this as well, and they were present?
If that's the motion and to amend, then that's acceptable.
Do I have a motion?
Let me ask one question.
We can, go ahead.
Uh, Administrator Howard, did that last paragraph clarify some of your concerns for, for Brookings from yesterday?
Yes, I agree, that the exceptions that were listed in the last paragraph are very helpful, and I, and I think as it stated, deemed as essential personnel services leaves enough opening, when I think of the trucking industry alone, I think, well, there's a lot of people who provide goods and services to our area that stay the night because we're too far away to get back to wherever they came from the same day. So I think that's good in addition to what Ms. Hildago had stated earlier. Um, just to let you know, the, our council is meeting tonight, and I will plan on bringing something similar to them this evening as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Howard. Thanks for coming.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that-
Second, we have another question.
No, I was just gonna make the motion, but-
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I wanna make a motion that we, uh, accept the Oregon Legislative Coastal Caucus recommendation to be sent to Governor Brown for her presumed approval.
As written?
As written. Or with the mem, I'm sorry, no, yes.
With the mem.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Do we have any further discussion? Roll, please. Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Representative Smith?
I just want to thank you, uh, commissioners and all of the, the city personnel and staff, uh, for moving this forward today. Uh, I'm gonna race to Banden, cause I'm a little late, um, but, um, I'm, I'm just kidding, Sheriff, I'm not gonna race, but, um, I-
I know you better.
I, I just want to put a shout out to, and I'm thinking, I want to thank, uh, City Manager Fritz for reminding me, I want to put a shout out to all of our personnel that are out there working, our, our folks in our grocery stores, our folks in, you know, our gas stations, you know, the, the frontline folks that, that are involved with the public every day, not knowing if they're sick or not. And so we need to keep them in our thoughts and prayers and, and, uh, make sure that we can protect them, uh, as much as possible. Once we, uh, have, um, enough resources that we don't have to worry about masks, we need to get them, uh, those protective resources as well, so. Just a shout out to all of them, and again, I want to thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Would you grab one of those on your right on the table there? One of those pictures?
Oh, yes, I've seen it, yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd also like to say something to, to the members of the county, you know, I just want to let everyone know out there, we've got some deep challenges that we're gonna face here. Um, this is going to get worse before it gets better, and we need to realize that. And to be very aware of your surroundings, be very aware of the people that you reach out and touch, um, literally, and how close you get yourself to different people that you may not know. But there's also gonna be a financial and economic impact to this as well, and we realize that as a board. Lot of local businesses here are gonna suffer in the next few months, and we're probably gonna lose some of our local businesses. But we just want to let you know that we understand what's happening, we are working hard here to try and help this and get through it, and if you have questions or concerns, I welcome your phone calls to the, to the offices, and we will try to offer all the resources that we can to make this as smooth of a event as we can, and to try and help you as much as we can, um, to protect your businesses, your homes, and your families. Uh, this board is working hard to do that. I appreciate everyone coming here this morning and participating and letting the public know how, how much we do care. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Sheriff Ford, uh, your time and effort on this as well, um, spending the countless hours that you do around the county to make sure that we fully understand exactly what's happening. Representative Smith's work on this, and I just, um, I hate to say I look forward to coming out of the other side of this, but I do. And, uh, and I hope it's, I hope it's still a zero when we come out of this. I read so much on social media of all the negative of this. The positive of this is that we are working as hard as we can to make this better, or as, as good as it can be, and we will all continue to do that. Commissioner Gold?
Um, I just wanted to mention that, um, I held a meeting with some South County people last Friday, and they brought up some concerns, and one of the big concerns is that there are quite a number of people in our county, elderly people, who do not have access to internet, and I was thinking that possibly we could set up, uh, like a hotline where the calls come into the county and then go out to volunteers so that they can answer. I know two-one-one is already out there, but the people don't actually get to speak to a person, and I've been working with a lot of volunteer organizations, and I think a lot of these people would be willing to accept calls to help individuals if they were to call in. And some of the needs- were to call in. And some of the needs that we discussed were in-home caretakers, food and essential home supplies. Some of these elderly folks who are shut in, they don't have the, uh, uh, ability to go out and shop for themselves. Childcare is a real big issue. Uh, education, how are the kids gonna be educated? Domestic issues, violence, abuse, when we have all these stressful times, a lot of times that's escalated. Um, mental health issues, depression, suicidal types of things, PTSD, extreme financial hardship and unemployment. And some of these issues are being addressed, but questions, I think, are gonna come from individuals. What are they gonna do? So, I talked to Jeremy last Friday, and he said it might be possible to set up sign of a, some kind of a call center here, not where everybody's sitting together answering phones, but a call where people could call into the county, and then that call could be transferred to a volunteer. Now, of course, that has to be set up before we actually do this, but I think that would be real helpful for those citizens who are homebound without internet resources. And some of them even without TVs. I think Jody has something to say.
Um, thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Gold, because that, um, in my, in my hours of not sleeping at night, thinking about this, um, that was one of the things that, uh, the City of Gold Beach has always been, um, the de facto four-one-one for the entire world. Uh, we have a call, we have a call sheet of like, you know, who's the garbage company? How do I get ahold of electric company and all that? So I've kind of switched over my staff with the, um, where people, if they call us with those questions, that we can route them to the right people. And one of my big concerns is, um, I'm shopping for my stepdad because I don't want, two weeks ago, I was trying to kick him out of the house. Now I'm trying to keep him in the house. Um, so I'm going to the store and shopping for him, and I know that there are other people in our community that they need to stay home, but they need their groceries. Um, they do complain that we don't bring them the right things, though.
Can't read their list.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm not bringing him everything he wants, but, um, but I know that there are other people in our community that shouldn't go out, um, can't go out. And so, we're, we're gonna talk about that at the city today, that what can we do to help the folks in our town to try to make sure that they're not putting themselves at risk just to simply go get food. So, I appreciate you coming up with that. That, that's great.
Let me mention one other thing. We don't know actually what's being done. Like churches, I know, are doing a lot.
Yes.
And I have a volunteer that's combining a list of cer, uh, churches so that we can reach out to them and find out, hey, what are they actually doing so we don't replicate our efforts?
We don't want to duplicate efforts. Um, uh, the, the city in cooperation with Gold Beach Main Street, we have, um, a position there that's helping, um, it's a long story, but helping businesses and stuff. But I'm gonna enlist her help in trying to get, uh, you know, resources for folks here in, in Gold Beach. And if we can deploy something, maybe we can try to do that on a larger scale. But, um, obviously, I'm worried about my citizens, you know, the most, but...
Well, bottom line, we need to work together.
Yeah, so if we can come up with something that works, um, and, uh, I just want to say that I was reading yesterday, the Governor of Michigan said that, you know, we're, we're building a plane as we're flying it at, you know, ten thousand feet. We all feel like we're kind of, you know, coming up with these ideas as, on the fly. So, um, so if we can get something that seems to work, um, we'll certainly let you know.
Okay, and I do have lists of volunteers. I could send it out, and I'm sure there's lots of folks out there that would love to help out.
That would be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyce?
Mr. Gold, that is a very good idea. It reminds me of the Chet Gobard days, uh, especially, what, seventeen through the twenty-third, whatever it was. Weren't we getting, I think Sheriff would remember, you would remember, Dumire, excuse me, EMC Dumire would remember, eight or nine hundred calls a day, I think. Yeah, so may, I don't think we'd get that, that huge of a number, but boy, that might be a process or, um, might really be helpful to people. So, yeah, great. That's all.
All right, anything further? All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Oh, department questions?
That's why I asked if we had anything further. Okay, yes, we're not adjourned then. We have department head questions? Wendy Lang is not here. Jim Colan's not here. Renee Colan is not here. Uh, Stacy DeLong's not here. Julie Swift is not here. Becky Crockett's not here. Summer Mattson's not here. Madison, sorry. Um, Dave Fortman's not here. Chad Brewer, I saw him walk by. He's not here. Mr. Dumire, do you have any questions or concerns?
Again, for the record, Jeremy Dumire, Curry County Emergency Manager. Uh, no questions or concerns, but I did want to bring up something just on the previous, uh, uh, statements. We also have, of course, have the radio stations that we can push the information out to.
Right.
And, uh, that is another resource.
Yeah, if people actually listen to the radio.
Yeah, so no other concerns, though.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Ward, do you have any? Ms. Crumley's not here. Our Veterans VSO Officer's not here. Sheriff Ward, anything further, sir?
Just real quick, we're gonna do everything that we can to help our citizens. Uh, we're, we're staying open. We're twenty-four-seven. We've eliminated some of the activities that we perform, but we're still gonna make contact with every call and complaint and do the best we can to help out. The one thing about the volunteer phone line and everything, the only suggestion I have about that is the message has to be consistent.
I was gonna say, before we do any of that, if they have a healthcare question or something like that, we have a script, some sort of script for them.
Yeah, just consistency is make sure that's the best information put out there.
Gotcha.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hopkins? Mr. Hopkins?
Colan's here now.
I see. He's hard target to miss.
So, uh, just for clarification on what the board wants to proceed with its county park system, you guys just did a resolution which is all well and fine, but you have control over what you do with the county parks. You don't have to wait for the state to say, "Yeah, let's do this." Uh, prior to this meeting, I did have our camp host slip the no vacancy sign, and I told him, "Hold off on renting to anybody until I figure out what you guys actually wanted to do with your county parks." So with that, is the board wanting to just stop renting to people that are coming in while letting the people that are already at the county parks' terms just expire? I know Sheriff Ward was out there asking the other parks to do that type of a thing. It's just a quick clarification.
I agree with what Sheriff, uh, Sheriff Ward and I talked about this yesterday, that, you know, he, he's encouraging them not to take any fu, future reservations, but the people that are currently there to let them stay until their reservation expires. Is that what the rest of the board would consider?
I think that's where we're at, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So, with the future reservations, are we talking?
Twenty different people, yeah.
Are we talking first come, first served? Because as of the moment, we aren't accepting reservations, but people could still come to the camp, park, take a site. Do you guys just not want to rent to anybody at the moment?
I, I'd say I think we're in agreement that no one right now.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Christensen? You're good. Mr. Colan?
Thank you, Commissioners. Jim Colan, Curry County Assessor. I, uh, appreciate you, the meeting that, uh, you had this morning. Um, I'm just wondering whether or not the, uh, the board is going to schedule a meeting to have more of a discussion on county business practices. Um, s, some of the things I'm wondering about, uh, with the new social distancing and stay-at-home orders that, uh, Governor's put down, put out, uh, is a consideration for the county that we'll be closing the outside doors to the public and, and making appointments or, or conducting business in person by appointment only? That'd be one of my questions. Uh, it seems also that, uh, one of the more, uh, common things that is taking place out there is people are limiting travel as much as possible. So I, will the cons, Commissioners be considering, uh, discussion of, of a trauma, travel for work limitation? We're also looking at, at the possibility of, e, even though we are open by appointment only in the assessor's office, we're also gonna be considering staggering work schedules. Those options, I suppose, are probably available to other departments. I do appreciate the Commissioners' work last week with the temporary, uh, personnel policies. So, really, I was just wondering if we can have more of a discussion as to what the best practices for county business might be, uh, during this, during this crisis.
I think it would probably be in our best interest to wait until the governor, I think she's going to clarify today or tomorrow what her, uh, agenda will be for the state. And we can add this to our Wednesday meeting.
Yeah.
To, that way there will hopefully have a little more clarification. Uh, so if we could ask maybe JJ to add it to, as an agenda item for discussion, um, and, and we can address it at that time. Counsel Huddle?
Thank you. So, um, in the agenda packet for Wednesday is, um, a very answered a couple of things. Uh, there was a possibility of closing the exterior doors, appointment only. Um, I did want to speak to the personnel rules that we made, um, again, and I've heard the flying a plane and building it and that kind of thing. So we made some personnel rules that were anticipating some of the state and federal personnel rule changes through the Acts. Uh, they're slightly different. We'll probably be making revisions to those, but definitely the employees here are gonna get whichever is the best benefit of all the different state, federal, and local personnel rules, so.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I thought we might want to h, hold it open, uh, to have a meeting every day at some point. Uh, I, I don't think that's necessarily going to be necessary, but we do have, as you mentioned, a Wednesday meeting. That, and, uh, Director Schmelzer is working offline. That's gonna give her a couple days to catch up, and I'm, I'm sure we're all gonna want her input on everything that's on that agenda, although she was working on that agenda early on. So, um, yeah, I think that's all I have now.
Okay. Anything further?
Nope.
I will, I just want another public note. I just want to let everyone know that Director Schmelzer is, is, is back. She's working. And, um, I've, I've read a lot of things on social media that she has been, uh, a little bit, um, derelict in her duties. Not the case at all. This woman is taking the position, uh, she's actually handles a position of probably three employees right now. And I've seen her, I've gotten emails from her at ten o'clock at night, as well as on weekends. Um, she's, I just want the county to know that she is doing her job and doing it well. Commissioner Gold?
I just have one more comment. Um, from the Commission, I want the go-ahead. I, I don't believe in doing things as a Lone Ranger. The go-ahead to work on this call system for people to call in.
Absolutely.
Certainly. You agree with that, sir?
Okay.
You bet.
All right. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.